You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
March 23th Fayetteville City Council meeting. Certainly, we would like to thank you, all of you who are joining us online, also who are joining us on Fay 7 and through live streaming. So at this time, we would ask that the council would please rise. And also, we have a few council members that are joining us by phone. We have joined us by phone council members Waddell, Councilmember DJ Hair, and Councilmember Larry Wright. So are you all online?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we're here.
All right. So at this time, we will ask that everyone who are present, the staff, as well as the City Council to stand, will have our invocation by Pastor Chris Davis, Councilmember Chris Davis. And after, at the conclusion of the invocation, we ask that you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us for another opportunity to come to stand before the people, give us wisdom, knowledge, and with an understanding on this day. God, we pray for a blessing upon this land, upon this nation, upon the world, that this be an opportunity that we might experience your grace and your healing through this trying time, God. Right now, we pray for those who are on the front line, who are working for the benefit of mankind. God, right now, even help us in this season to recognize the value that you've invested into each and every one of us so that we might properly be your sons and your daughters and keep us so that we might do the work that you've appointed our hands to do. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. We know you pretty well, but you want to, just like all of our clergy or those who rendered the invocation, tell us a little bit about your ministry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Senior Pastor, Force of Life Fayetteville, 2415 Gary Street. We are a ministry committed to family, faith, and fellowship. And during this time, we are all praying for our nation and we're all looking for ways to stay closely connected, but having proper distance. Our ministry is a growing, thriving ministry. We're again focused on family and invested into our youth. And we pray for all of those ministries pastors and leaders who are out there carrying the burden and watching over people. And I thank you as always for an opportunity to do the invocation. It is an amazing opportunity and I thank you for it.
Thank you for many levels of service to the community, sir, as a pastor and as a council member. So those that are joining us tonight, tonight we are practicing some new strategies in order to keep the citizens of Fayetteville safe. We thank you so much for honoring the request to join us by telephone, by streaming, by Fay 7. We thank you that you've limited your presence tonight and we'll make sure that going forward, that all of our meetings are continued to be, to use the latest communication to communicate with the citizens of Fayetteville without you coming in. Tonight, we are practicing our social distancing. We actually, and we'll continue and encourage you during this difficult time for not only our community, but our country and our world. We ask that you please continue to keep us in prayer and as we make the decisions that are necessary to keep you safe. At this time, with that being said, I will ask Mr. Kevin Orata, I think a member of our Fayetteville Corporate Communications, to come and to just tell us about all of the different avenues of communication that are available.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So really just wanted to share with you what you were talking about, how we're reaching out. So before we talk about the streaming piece, let me talk about the website. So right now, for COVID and what's going on in our community, we've established an alert banner on our webpage. So if you go to the top of FayettevilleNC.gov, you can clearly see where that page goes to. It's got all of the information on our programs and services, what's been changed or adjusted across the city as we've gone through this over the last couple of weeks. I think we've got like 6,000 hits on that thing just in the week that we've had set up. So people are going there and that's the information where we're residing everything. We change it every day at 3 o'clock. So every time we get an update from a director on something that's happening across the city and we work that with Mr. Hewitt, we get that information up there. You mentioned streaming. Right now, we have a new device. We started working on, coincidentally, about six months ago to get Mr. Hewitt authorize us to purchase this thing at a budget cycle just for emergencies like this. And so literally two weeks ago, just before COVID hit us, we started streaming on Fay TV on apps. And so what that means for us is typically you can only watch Fay TV or Government Access Channel on Spectrum, which is across the city of 210,000 residents. There's not a lot of people that have that when you look at the percentage wise across the city. Proprietary information can't share those numbers. They don't share those with us, but we know it's not a huge amount with the increased number of cord cutters that we have. So this new platform allows us to stream on Apple TV, on Roku, on Firestick, on Android TV, and Fire TV. And so the fact that we can now go out though on those for cord cutters, they can download our app, go on there and search for either the keyword of Fayetteville or Fay TV and then watch TV live, which they could be doing right now from their home. And so that's another added avenue of where they can start watching our TV. The beauty of that over the last couple of weeks is that it allows us to host our programs on there where you can watch a live stream. So that's a huge move forward for us. The other added benefit is you could always go to FayTV.net, which you can find on our homepage from the website for the city or just on FayTV.net and livestream this. The benefit of this program for us as well is that it broadcasts our signal in HD quality. So it's a top-quality product. It's a very stable platform. So you can literally watch this on the web, sitting out here in your car or watch it from home on your computer. So we're very excited about that. And again, very timely that it's happened in this unfortunate circumstance of COVID hitting our community, but hopefully it helps with our reach.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Right, Council. Out of 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Oh, all right, we have an announcement. And Council, because we are practicing our social distancing, I'll get everyone to try their light so that I can make sure that I have the proper person. So let's do it one at a time. I'll start at my right. Councilmember Kinston, okay, all right. Councilmember Ingram, okay. Mayor Protem, got you. All right, Councilmember Bakes McGlaughlin, got you. Councilmember Dawkins, got you, sir. Councilmember Davis. Oh, Councilman Davis, got you. All right, and of course, those who are joining us by phone, we've talked about that process. Okay, all right, so Mayor Protem, you had a question?
No, I had an announcement, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to talk about the teddy bear that I have hanging up here. So in my neighborhood, as I was going down the street and I was through the Nextdoor app, I started seeing teddy bears in the windows of people's homes as we were going by. So I started researching it and they put it on Nextdoor and I thought it would be a very great community thing to do as a city of Fayetteville. And what it is, it has started in Texas. And I'm going to read what people are doing. The parents have asked for the neighbors, let's see, parents are spreading over the word over social media, asking people to place stuffed bears in the windows to create social distance approved scavenger hunt. The teddy bears were an idea inspired by a book that the song's called "We're Going on a Bear Hunt." Both the song and the book start out, "We're going on a bear hunt. We're going to catch one. I'm not scared, what a beautiful day." And what they are saying is that children, parents are taking their children outside the house because they're stuck in the house and trying to teach them social distancing. Is that they go through the neighborhood and they're counting the bears and where they can find a bear hunt. I will tell you, my neighborhood has started it and it's a really cool thing. And people are even getting in their cars and going to different neighborhoods. So if you get on Nextdoor app and say that your neighborhood is doing it, it's a way that we can help parents that are homeschooling their children that are not used to it. It's called "The Bear Hunt." "The Bear Hunt." So I brought the bear. I've got three in my window already, so I just wanted to share that with the public. Thank you.
Nice, thank you. All right. All right, well, we found that bear.
For today.
For today, all right. So Council, with that, we will move to approve of the agenda with the modifications that were discussed. Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, Mayor Coleman, I would like to move that we accept the agenda with the exception of item 6.03 and adding our administrative items for the resolution. Let me get the number of that resolution. Resolution number R2020 dash, is there more to that one? Or is that enough to add that?
Madam Attorney?
So Mayor, let's do it like this first. Let's adopt the agenda with the addition of the items. And then when we get to the consent agenda, Councilmember Ingram can pull, I think it was 6.4 that she was referring to.
Right, yes.
So the proposal would be to add two items to your consent agenda,
Was it two or?
Which you could, which you could number as 6.01.
01 and 6.002.
That's correct. And then also, as a part of the approval of the agenda, it would be to remove item 7.05, which is P20-07, Request for a Special Use Permit to Allow Duplex to Be Located in a Single Family 10 SF10 Zoning District Located at 440 Mcfee Drive, Tax Map Number 0427-33-9125, Containing Point 38 Acres and Being the Property of Patrick Gibney and Sandy Mount Properties. Pull that item and schedule that for your Tuesday, April 14, 2020 regular City Council meeting.
Okay, all right. So did you capture that, Councilmember Ingram? We will deal with the 6.03 under the consent. So item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve with, Councilmember Kinston?
I would second the motion.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Ingram, you want to repeat?
Yes, I would like to approve the agenda with the addition of two items, 6.011 and 6.012, and also removing item 7.05 to be added to our April 14 meeting.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. There's a second by Councilmember Kinston to approve with those changes. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for.
I have a question, sir. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 6.011, which item is that?
That is the new item of, Madam, Ms. Ingram, was that the letter of support to PWC?
No, that is the resolution giving the authority to City Manager.
And 6.012 is the new item for PWC?
PWC, yes.
Can we place that item? Can we, do we need to discuss pulling that off of consent after this is approved?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve the addition of, to approve the agenda with the addition of 6.011 and 6.012. Second, my Councilmember Kinston. Any further discussion on the motion? And as to remove 7.05 and defer to April 14 meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
Councilmember Hair?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. All right, item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Ingram?
Mayor Coleman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.03, Approval of the Memorandum of Agreement with Fort Bragg for Use of Federal Property of MacArthur Road for Discussion and Vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we also include items 6.012 to be pulled for discussion and an up-down vote?
And 6.011, PWC, okay. All right, anything else, Council? All right, so I'll need that kind of articulating a motion. Councilmember Ingram?
Mayor Coleman, I would like to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 6.03, item 6.011, and item 6.012 for vote and discussion.
All right, that's, Councilman Davis, that's a second?
Second, yes, sir.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, a second by Councilmember Davis to approve with the exception of those items listed. Oh, okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
Councilmember Hair?
Green, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.03, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Bauer, would you mind coming up and give us a brief, a very, very brief explanation on what this MOA entails for the viewing audience with Fort Bragg? And also, after that, I probably will be calling for vote. Thank you.
Certainly, certainly. This item is a follow-up from the work session and the proposed agreement is the same one that was reviewed by the work session previously. What this is, is a memorandum of agreement on, should this city move forward with working with Fort Bragg in a partnership to develop the MacArthur Road site, about 80 acres that's currently owned by the Department of Defense, to develop a field, a sportfield project. This would organize or basically control how that relationship and how that project would move forward. This is an agreement that is not actionable yet. It is part of the application to the Department of Defense for a long-term lease for the property. So what this allows the department, basically the local garrison to do, is to take this memorandum of agreement and use it as a basis of an application for a long-term lease. And then it only becomes effective if that long-term lease is actually awarded to the city. And then we would have at this point, a proposal of a 50-year lease upon which to then construct a sports field project on that site in partnership with Fort Bragg. The agreement also has a draft master plan for the facility, which is attached, which talks about what kind of amenities would be constructed. And the current limitation for funding right now that's provided by the council is $3.5 million. I think that's the main sort of terms of the agreement that's before you.
All right, and thank you. And can you speak to the ownership of the property? And I'm not going to say removal, but at any given point in time, though this, we don't own this, the, I guess, Fort Bragg or federal government does have a right to deny access to that property?
Well, there's two different pieces here. One is the MOA. And the memorandum of agreement does say that it's terminable at will. However, it says it also, it doesn't go into place unless there's a 50-year lease. And what you don't have is that 50-year lease and the terms upon which that lease may or may not be terminated. So that's the key piece that you're looking for is to understanding what the terms of the lease are. And this wouldn't move forward until there was a lease that the council could consider entering into for a very long period of time. So this is part of it, which consists of the application process. And then if that application process is successful, the council would consider that long-term lease. And that's where you'd really want to look at whether or how that process could be terminated and what would happen should that become a reality. So I can't really answer that question yet because we don't have the lease.
But it can be a reality.
We don't know until we have the lease.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I read through this, a couple of questions jumped out at me. First and foremost, if you look at the MOA, item number 4, 4.1.1A, it refers to providing 3.5 million as initial funding toward the complex of the initial phase of development as identified in the master plan and seeking supplemental funding to complete elements of the master plan over time. Construct, take all action, and provide resources necessary within the initial funding and any supplemental funding that may be acquired or allocated to prosecute the completion of Phase 1. And then if you go to page 2 of 6, it again refers to the completion of, if you look at item D, Timing, Complete Phase 1 of the Master Plan. So the first part of my question would be, I was unaware. And then if you will also take a look at the renderings, Exhibit A, and the final build-out, when we made the decision to divide the funding and allocate 3.5, I was unaware that there was a decision to essentially break this up into phases and that at some point there may be, or that there wasn't going to be an expectation that we would look for additional funding to continue the build-out of MacArthur Road. So that's the first observation that I want to make. The second observation, I was under the understanding as we were having these conversations over the last year or so, that the operation of the facility would be a joint responsibility, or that's at least what I thought that I had been led to understand between both Fort Bragg and the city of Fayetteville. But under 4.1.2, item B, sub-item I, Use and Priority, it indicates, of course, the use of priority, the times that the military would have priority. But then under C, header Roman numeral 1 and 2, Maintenance, it would be the city's responsibility to cover all the maintenance. It would be our obligation. And so that was the other point that I was unaware of as we were having these conversations because I was under the impression that that was not the case. And then it's also mentioned under 4.3.2, Maintain the Property, that each party would meet at least annually to discuss scheduling and ongoing use of property. So that ongoing use of property indicates to me, as Councilmember Ingram alluded to when she spoke with Mr. Bauer, that there is that ability for either party to cancel or terminate at any time. And so I just want to get a clearer understanding of those items. So the initial phase versus full build-out and then the responsibility of who will maintain the facility because it is joint-use facility. So who will maintain the facility? And then what the expectation is in terms of termination? I think that Mr. Bauer spoke to the termination aspect, but it's pretty clear in this that it is at will of either party. But those other two items are still a bit vague and could use some clarification if possible.
Okay, so you're going to try to address that? Because I think, I mean, so you're trying to address that. I have a couple of questions. I have Councilmember Dawkins there myself.
Okay, I'll do my best on those two questions first. The key piece here is that there's, this is 80-plus acres of land that the city hasn't had to buy. And the proposal here is to enter into a no-cost lease. And the no-cost lease, a part of the bargain there is what is the value provided back to the Department of Defense in order for the use of those 80 acres over a 50-year period. And the proposal that's memorized in this MOA is that part of the value is the actual improvement of that property. So it has some recreational value, both to the community and to Fort Bragg. Another piece is the ongoing operation and maintenance facility. Just as if we were to build a field, sports field complex on any other location, we would have the obligation to maintain that facility. So same here, we're taking on the obligation to maintain this facility should we construct it. When we initially brought this forward to council?
Let me pause you right there, Mr. Bauer, because I want to be perfectly clear in explaining that the reason for my question is because as we've been having these conversations, it was represented that Fort Bragg would bear some of the responsibility for the maintenance. Now, had that been discussed with them or not, I don't know because we haven't really been privy to those conversations. But it was represented that way. And I can go back and review other audio of conversations we've had, but that was the representation. So that's the reason for that question. Not necessarily, I understand that if we build a facility on land that we own, we are responsible for the maintenance. But that was a part of the selling point for this particular piece of property was that that relationship would allow for the sharing of the cost of the ongoing maintenance. And then, so you don't even have to really address that any further for me because I understand your response. But when we talk about the other part about the initial phase, when we're looking at Exhibit A, this, in your estimation, is this what's expected for the 3.5 million? And then when we look at the final build-out, is this what's being expected under this memorandum of agreement for the final build-out? And where is that money supposed to come from for the final build-out? And that's the bulk of my question.
The initial estimate, I think we had initial funding provided for this project was, I think, $5.5 million. The initial phase, and we have phased this project as it was presented to council initially, that full Phase 1 is estimated cost of $5.5 million. That has been reduced by $2 million. So at this point, it is not our belief that all of Phase 1 or the first phase can be constructed for the current allocated funding. That's why you can see that the wording has been changed to say that this money would be provided toward the completion of the first phase. There has always been the anticipation.
The final build-out was based upon the $9 million or the $8.7 that we initially had allocated toward this project? The full build-out?
The full build-out is based on basically the needs assessment and what was, what would look like as an attractive full master plan for the 80 acres. There's no commitment.
That answers my question. Thank you so much. Forgive me for interrupting you, but you did answer my question. Thank you.
All right, so I did have a comment question. So the memorandum of understanding says in item number 3 that the memorandum agreement between the USAG and the city sets out the rights, obligations of parties to develop the said property and is contingent upon the issuance of a lease. So this is the first step toward an agreement, but not the agreement. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Kind of like what we did across the, at the stadium that you originally had to have a memorandum to articulate your conversation.
Right.
But the actual contracts that had all of the details were a part of this. But you can't have one that's legally binding without the other, right?
The term would be contingent.
Contingent, yeah.
So this is contingent upon us reaching agreement on a long-term lease.
Which will address things like use? What's to address things like use and cost and what the outs are or the severances or the options are for breaking the lease and what that looks like?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. So that is, that is the part that I wanted to make sure that what we're voted on tonight is just the memorandum of understanding to obtain the next step, which would be the lease. But I think if you look at it, eighty acres of land, as we've, you know, we've talked about this project extensively from purchasing eighty acres in Military Business Park, which had a price tag of over what-
It was actually sixty acres there, sir, and it was well over three million dollars.
Over three million. And so it's a substantial contribution by giving us eighty acres and the use of it for fifty years. But I guess the devil's in the details of the lease, so.
Absolutely.
But tonight, what's before us is just a memorandum of understanding to move this to the next step. And I think there's another question. All right, Councilmember Waddell.
Okay, forgive me. I was on mute. My, I'm on my second round already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I didn't see, Councilmember Wright, make sure that you send that to the clerk so that I don't skip you. Councilmember Waddell, if you don't mind, let me get Councilmember Wright since this is his first round.
Absolutely.
The memorandum of understanding on four point three, both parties will, four point three point one, develop the property. So when, I guess that would be to Assistant City Manager Kristoff, what does it mean when you say both parties will develop the property?
Well, there's actually a couple of terms under that, if I remember correctly, sir. And the main responsibility of Fort Bragg is to make sure they review the proposed development plans and give us approval within a reasonable period of time. Everything we put here, as clear in the agreement, has to meet the Army's design specifications. This is a landing safety zone, so there are certain restrictions that do apply to the property. That's why we don't have a large clubhouse proposed as part of the master plan. It's mostly open space. And we wanna make sure that we don't have anything that's proposed here that would be in violation. So their responsibility is to review it on a timely basis so we don't get stuck in a process where we wanna move forward with the project and we end up in an endless review. So that was what we wanna make clear as part of the agreements, as far as them helping the community develop the property.
I understand. Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Waddell, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Bauer, I sincerely do apologize for cutting you off, and I hope that you understand that. I did not mean to be rude to you in that moment, so please forgive me. Now, council, I wanna point out that when we look at this document and we look at items A and exhibit A and the final build out, this document would appear to be misleading to either the USAG or to the council, one or the other, based upon which direction you look at it from, because we have only, we took a consensus to only allocate three point five million dollars to this project at this location. And we've allocated the rest of the funding to different locations. So at this point, if this is the representation that's going out, it doesn't seem to be an accurate representation based upon the conversations or the last consensus that we took as a council.
Well, this says that exhibit A says initial phase. Exhibit B says full build out. But I don't think without having this lease, you can fully answer what the final outcome is because this memorandum only says that you've had a discussion that will be contingent upon a lease, which will spell out who has what obligation. So it's, Mr. Bauer, don't leave.
But doesn't the memorandum of agreement, what we were explained in our work session when we had this conversation, was that the memorandum of agreement outlines to our partners, our potential partners at Fort Bragg, what they can expect from us in terms of deliverables regarding this project so that they can make a determination as to whether or not this is feasible for them to enter into this lease? And if we are already aware that we have diminished our budget significantly and that we, based upon prior conversations, don't even actually have enough money to complete the initial build out, which is exhibit A, based upon the fact that it was proposed at five million and now we've reduced that budget to three point five, let alone to complete the final build out. That's what I'm basing my commentary upon. So I do understand that this is just to get us to a lease. But I think, again, I led with, it's misleading either to the council, because there, if it's, if this is what we're going with, then that says to the council, please be prepared to have an expectation to find additional funding to build out to this specification or that there is an expectation that this will be the level of build out. And if it's not that, then it would be misleading to the USAG potentially because this would be, if we're delivering this document and saying, this is the memorandum of agreement that we would like for you to base a lease upon, then they can be looking at some point and saying, well, you're not, you knew that you weren't even in a position to be able to deliver on what it is that you put into this document. So I think you just have some clarification in terms of that.
Yes, ma'am. So to the way I recall the conversation is when we talked about this, we talked about the budgets for this project. And the council said we would allocate so much at this location contingent upon environmental and lease and other documentation. We'd allocate so much at this location depending on those same things. This clearly says that that conversation that we had was about the amount of money that was remaining in the parks and rec bond funds for that project. This clearly says in four point two one B, seek funding for projects to develop and enhance specifically designated to support the training of fitness. So the three point five, we told them to adjust and change the renderings for that portion of it. And I think that is why he has it in phases. But without the lease, neither party has agreed upon what it is that they will do. But the conversation that we had was about allocation to this budget for MacArthur Road, which we voted on, and it passed by consensus. So I'm not really sure how we rectify our recollection of the meeting, but I know that the official action-
I think we're agreeing, Mayor. I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
That we built a consensus to put out three point five. But what I think I may be hearing you say is that, that the other dollars, which is the question that was never really clearly answered during the previous meeting, that those other dollars that were allocated to other locations may be funneling back to this project. Is that what I'm-
No, ma'am. That's not what I'm saying. But you were making the point, or my interpretation, was that when you looked at exhibit A, which showed initial phase, and you looked at exhibit B, which was full build out, that that was a part of the discussion when we first made a decision to move forward.
No, 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 no. The question that I just asked Mr. Bauer was, what was the anticipated cost for exhibit A? And the reason that I asked him that question was to be able to establish a baseline as to whether or not what we have allocated as a council during the consensus would get us to exhibit A because it is included in this memorandum. And his response to us, without saying no, was no, because this was a five thousand dollar estimation for this at that time.
The estimate for the first phase-
For exhibit A, right.
Exhibit A is five point five million dollars. That's correct.
That's what I meant.
And in response to your previous question, you asked me sort of what was the entire master plan for? And this is the way you master plan parks. You take a look at the entire property, you say, okay, what would it look like at full build out? And as part of a fifty-year agreement, you look at developing it over time. And so what we're saying is that, you know, over time, over fifty years, we don't, I guess if council has an anticipation that you're gonna do the three point five and never spend another dime, that'd be a different story. But what we're saying here is that, no, we're gonna put three point five. That's our guarantee right now. And we're gonna look for opportunities for grants or other funding over the fifty years to continue the development of the park consistent with its master plan. That's the intent, and it's, we've done our best to make sure that everyone understands that that is an interest, not a guarantee.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Mr. Bauer, what exactly do we know what three point five million will land us with this land? What will we be able to develop with this three point five million? Because I personally don't think it may get us much, but can you ask, I mean, tell me what that will get us?
No, I cannot. I'm sorry. Until we actually put something out to bid and get to the design process, as you've, we've experienced several times, you know, costs change and the marketplace moves quite quickly. So we'll go through the process of getting to a higher level of design, and then we'll bid it out in phases and pieces, and we'll get as much of it as we can.
So this three point five million, when we put it out to bid, we may, just may, go over with the bid to say, okay, we need more than three point five million.
Our proposal would be to, again, this says three point five million toward phase one. Doesn't say we have to complete phase one, but we know we cannot be phase one. So we'd do it with bids and what they call bid alternates. So you would, this is the least we wanna do. And then if we can add another field, we'll see what the bid is for option A, option C, and we'd go as far down that list as we could with the funding available.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Davis and then Banks, McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my limited experience with private-public governmental partnerships, I'd just like to reiterate that it is important that our partners, Fort Bragg, the US government, understand that we're serious about this. So to send them a MOA without some financial commitment is like blowing bubbles in the wind, in my opinion. So when it comes to making, presenting an MOA, memorandum of agreement, where we've already been working tirelessly with the government, the military base, to provide these types of facilities, amenities, it makes perfect sense that we would put some real equity. And three point five million dollars is a lot of money. It's not a little bit of money. So that is real commitment, and I believe it's the right move. And once we continue, finish our deliberations, I believe we should come to an agreement to bring a vote forward and move forward because there are a lot of other things we probably need to be doing right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Banks, McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess from our last meeting regarding this, I thought the three point five was to get a example of how things were gonna be built. Like, for example, for exhibit A, my thoughts were that we were gonna have them look into and give us a kinda like a display of what we can use, what would a three point five million get us? By looking at it, I'm sure on that particular picture, we've definitely maxed out that amount. If I can recall, the three point five wouldn't be able to take us really anywhere as far as looking at that, looking at the photo. My question is for, and I think you already answered it, as far as the three point five, you can't tell us as far as where can that money get us? So right now, I feel as if, if we don't know what the three point five can get us, we don't wanna keep putting money into different projects and not being able to complete them. I think with the three point five, if we're unaware of where it's gonna take us, we might as well put that on something else as far as advancing the parks and recreations that we already have in place, adding to those different parks. I know that's something we hadn't discussed, but from my understanding, I thought when we agreed the three point five, we did mention that it's a possibility it may cost us a little bit more. But just from phase one, that can't even get, that can't even get us three point five million dollars. And I think that's a lot of money, where that money can be spent on something else. That's just my thoughts.
Well, just, okay, thank you. I think to clarify what he's saying is that they're gonna have to send this out to an architect or someone to provide renderings for what that looks like.
I think that what we actually brought to the council was a couple of study options. One of those study options was to look at revision to this master plan for a cost of about fifty thousand dollars or something like that. Council decided not to spend that money on a study and just changed the amount of money allocated. So this master plan was already done by an architectural team. The cost estimates we have were done, but the cost estimate was based on five point five million dollars, not on three point five. So we didn't go back and ask them to redo the work based on the revised budget. We provided that option to the council, but council did not authorize that additional spending just for the revised master plan.
All right, Councilwoman Kinston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna say that there's a lot of unknowns with this for me because we did a lot, or allocate the three point five, but it sounds like there's still some confusion. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so council, let's see, Councilmember Wright.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have some concerns about both areas. We allocated three point five to Fields Road and here, MacArthur as well. This exhibit A versus the full build out. In the full build out, we see also the shelter and the large playgrounds. There wouldn't be any shelters in exhibit A. And help me to understand, are we spending the whole three point five with exhibit A or is this just an exhibit to give Fort Bragg an idea of where we're headed in the future of this particular park? I don't, and my next question would be, what is the timeframe that we're looking at where these athletic fields can be active and you have people out there using these fields and these facilities? And I know that Fields Road is not on the agenda tonight, but we have three point five allocated for that also. So, you know, help me to understand, staff. And I know that Kristoff, that you've talked about fifty years down the road, we have time to develop this site. Do we have any kind of timeline where this site can be active?
Sir, I think that there are a couple of different pieces that are still, make it hard to answer that question in detail. But I just wanted to clarify one piece for you. We have exhibit A, and there's an initial phase, then there's a full build out. What we're really talking about here is focusing on exhibit A, which is that initial phase. And we know that the three point five million dollars is not gonna be enough to build out that entire initial phase. So we'll be looking at, when we get in the design process, making choices about what part of that can actually be funded for the three point five million dollars. The key piece that's uncertain right now is that once, should council move forward with authorizing this MOA, that starts the process for the application for the long-term lease. That process, we don't know exactly how long that will take. We're hoping it can be quick, but army quick is, can be still several months, if not longer than that. And I wouldn't want to commit to you that it's gonna be faster than that. Once that long-term lease is approved, assuming that it is approved, and comes back to council and council is comfortable with it, and we then have a full agreement and can move forward and the funding is in place, then it's gonna take us somewhere about twelve months to develop those fields and put them into place. So the unknown part is getting the lease in place. Once we have the lease in place, we're looking about another twelve months after that before we have fields that are available. Currently, this is scheduled for being one of the last projects or later projects. So we hadn't actually planned to move forward with this project until FY twenty-three. So we still have a couple of years before we actually planned on funding it in our current process.
Okay, got you. So because your response just now included twenty-four months, so you're saying two years down the road, if when we just begin the actual work for the project and then another twelve to two years before the project is ended. So we're looking at four to five years.
Probably two to three, I'd say, sir, two to three years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so council, let me reiterate this, and then we need to bring this home. The consensus that we had after multiple meetings, multiple discussions, was that these would be budgets for these different projects contingent upon environmental and leases. We've asked them repeatedly in these meetings, where is the lease? Where is the documentation from the military? Here it is. So we have an opportunity to vote for this. Did the same thing on Fields Road. We had site control, but we're waiting on environmental. Every one of our actions that we voted on and to give consensus to move this forward, as difficult as the time as we've had, had contingencies on it. It was the site control for what we didn't own. It was a lease, and it was the results of an environmental study. We're waiting on all of that. We've allocated three point five million dollars to Fields Road, but we don't have the environmental. When the paperwork comes in, we will then have an opportunity. This is moving the first step of obtaining a lease, which many of you who would, as we talk about this, agree that that is one of the things we required of them. Without a memorandum of understanding, you're not gonna have a lease. We can't have a lease. So I think that some of the questions we're asking, you know, in so many words, are putting the cart before the horse because- because it starts with a lease and an understanding that will have to come back to council to be approved or not. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
All right. So, council, we have a few things. I think, uh, Councilmember, uh, I think, that's it? So Councilman Dawkins, I see your light?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, before I make a motion, I need to ask you a question. Uh, on the motion, do I need to add the wording contingent upon a lease with the Fort Bragg Garrison? Or, uh, is it implied in the memorandum of agreement?
Um, actually, take a look at Paragraph Three, Councilmember Dawkins. I think it's in there. Kristoff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Fort Bragg for use of federal property on MacArthur Road. And when I say Fort Bragg, it's United States Army, uh, Fort Bragg Garrison.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, it's a second.
Second, Mayor.
Well, I, I had a mayor pro tem, but thank you, sir. It was, uh...
Okay, no problem.
All right, second by Mayor Pro Tem. Council, now we've discussed this extensively, so maybe there's no discussions at this time. We'll look to you for your votes. All right, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Councilmember, um, Hare?
Green.
And Councilmember Wright?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries seven to three. Uh, voting in favor, Councilmember Davis, Dawkins, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, Wright. Uh, voting in opposition, Banks, McGlaughlin, uh, Ingram and Kinson and Waddell. So six to four. Couldn't count this morning. And if you look at the board, it may be all... Yeah, the, the seats are out of whack, so we're, we're going by verbal, okay? So, all right. All right, you got it. All right, motion carries. All right. Item, uh, six point zero one one, uh, that was Councilmember Ingram. Oh, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. City Manager, would you, um, come up and tell us about the resolution that you are requesting for us? Um, I believe it was emailed, uh, to all of us right after our six PM. Uh, the last paragraph is revised, now therefore be resolved to City Council, City of Fayetteville, based on the public health emergency posed by COVID-19, or you'll hear me call it Wuhan flu. I know that upset some folks. That the city manager is authorized to make the following operational decisions for COVID-19 response.
It was, I think this is the resolution one for PWC, Councilman Dawkins?
I, I, okay.
No, that's six point zero one two.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Got you, friend.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, I think what Councilmember Dawkins was referring to was, yes, I did send out a, a resolution during the dinner hour, and then after several rounds of discussion, there was an amendment made to the last paragraph. And so if I may, I'd like to read, read the proposed amendment for council's consideration and adoption.
Yeah.
So it would be, the last paragraph is revised, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, based on the public health emergency posed by COVID-19, that the city manager is authorized to make the following operational decisions for COVID-19 response. And then there are listed, first would be to waive transit fees, two would be to restrict access and close recreation centers and other city facilities, and three would be to waive the fees associated with COVID-19 response. That was also emailed to you, uh, prior to coming downstairs.
Okay, okay. I did, you had a question, sir?
Um, yes, and I, I wanted to make sure that the public understands if, um, we, uh, had to allow for tents to be constructed inside the city to assist in, uh, with testing or processing. That's one reason that we're wanting to do this, just in case we need to test a lot of our citizens.
That's correct. So that, we would consider that to fall under, uh, Item Number Three, waive fees for COVID-19 response. So certainly, if there were fees associated with erecting tents, which there typically is a fee, then Number Three would allow us to waive any of those fees associated with that.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Uh, Mayor, motion to approve the resolution authorizing city manager to make operational decisions, I spelled out, uh, in the resolution electronically, um, with the last paragraph being revised. Um, and would it be okay if I added, uh, through April the fourteenth? Or would you prefer to have a subject to revision by the City Council?
Uh, subject to revision or recension would be.
Subject to revision or recension. You went to Wake Forest, uh, recension. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, have a motion by Councilmember Dawkins. I think we have a second by Councilmember Ingram. I did have a question. Oh, that was not a second, it was a question. Okay, all right, so I have a question. Oh, well, I got a motion on the floor. Was that a motion, sir? All right, is there a second to Councilman Dawkins' motion?
I second it.
Okay, all right. Miss, Councilman Wright? Uh, so the...
Yes.
Wright Dawkins' motion? Uh, now we have discussion phase. Dawkins Wright, okay. Get so touchy, you must have went to Wake Forest. All right, um, so, uh, discussion phase, uh, Councilmember Ingram, and then I did have a question.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Attorney. Um, I, I just, I just wanted to take time once again to express the, uh, gratitude for our city staff and the work that they are putting in, um, on the behalf of the city. Um, we still have service members, our frontline service members, that are still working and that are still out, um, uh, kind, really making themselves vulnerable to, um, getting, um, COVID nineteen. So I just want to thank them for their dedication to their, their service and their jobs and, um, being, being, being there for us in this time of need. Uh, moving forward, I, I greatly appreciate this resolution coming in, because, um, as we are of our council, there are times where we are not able to come, come together as fast as possible. So to trust that our, our city leaders, um, the mayor and attorney and manager, um, can implement certain things, um, like assisting Cape Fear Valley with tents, um, removing their fees, their permit fees to make this happen. Um, all the partnerships that, uh, are happening right now are greatly needed. So I just wanted to thank all service members that are working together to make the, these, um, things happen. I'm done.
Get us a question, okay? All right, so again, it's question phase, okay? But I, yes, ma'am, I, I, I think we all, uh, concur with you. I did have a question for you, Madam Attorney. Um, the amendment that took place at the previous meeting, um, where you had, uh, deleted and entirely substituted Section nine point three four, which gave, uh, substantial amount of, uh, uh, power to the manager to act in such times. How is this different?
I'm sorry, Mayor, what did you say?
The previous, um, during the previous meeting, under the con, the consent item, there was, uh, an amendment to our ordinance, um, that removed or amended Section nine through thirty-four under the, the declaration of, uh, emergency declaration. And it took and it gave, uh, powers to the manager to do certain things. I'm wondering how is this different? It, that one addressed things like curfew, uh, extraordinary power incurred and timely communications with the government body, um...
Those were, if I recall correctly, Mayor, that was the state of emergency executed by the, um, the mayor and the council?
Right.
So what this is proposing to do is to deal with the operational aspect in terms of, which would not necessarily be policy matters, but would be specific to the closing of various facilities, those type of things. So this is, um, this is an extension of, or bifurcation, I guess. The, the mayor and the council, uh, have issued a state of emergency, which is within your purview, and this deals more with the operation, uh, operational aspect.
And the previous one I referenced, you don't, you're not familiar with?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That section, um, if you read it in its entirety, says that if there is a disaster and council is unable to meet...
Oh, gotcha.
Once you're able to meet as tonight, then you would be able to confer that authority to be or may designate, which that is what, and that section, I do not believe was changed. I think that section remained, um, from, uh, Code nineteen sixty-one. I don't think we've made a, we've codified this online yet, Pam, from the last meeting. We've not sent that to immunity code.
Okay.
So the portion that you're, it may have been a wordsmith change somewhere in that entire paragraph, but that paragraph that you're reading from, six point zero two, from the last meeting, is part of the existing code on Emergency Management Plan. Um, but again, that section, as revised last meeting and is, has been the case for some time in our Emergency Management Plan, speaks to if council is unable to meet and there is a need for us to protect the safety of the organization or the community, that I am authorized under your Emergency Management Plan to act. But as soon as council is able to meet, then you're able to confer that authority back. And as you're at meeting tonight, we have it on the agenda. There's not another regular meeting of council until April fourteenth. So that was the reason that we brought it forward tonight.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you.
So, uh, Councilman Davis, did you have a question? Okay, all right, let me clear the deck. Um, all right, council, so we have a motion on the floor. Uh, Dawkins Wright motion, I think I got it right that time. Uh, we've had a round of discussion, so I look to you for your votes, council. Uh, Councilman, Member Waddell?
Green.
Uh, Councilmember Hare?
Green, sir.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, motion carries. All right, Item six point zero one two, um, PWC, who pulled that? Was it Councilmember Ingram?
That was me.
Okay, Councilmember Waddell?
I pulled that item because I wanted us to discuss it and I wanted it to go for an up-down vote. I wanted the explanation to be provided. Is, is, um, our PWC rep in the room or is he in the building still?
He's here. He's, he's on his way up to the podium.
Okay, so I'll give him a moment to kind of explain to us what he explained, and then I'll, I'll make my statement, and then we can go ahead and vote. If, if nobody else has any发言.
Uh, Mr. Brown? He's, he's there, Councilmember.
Okay, so the Corps of Engineers has determined that three locks and dams on the Cape Fear River are no longer meet their, meet their mission because they're no longer commercial navigation on the Cape Fear River. So they've determined that they're going to turn, they're going to release control of those locks to a single entity. So, um, since Cape Lock and Dam Three controls the, the level of river water at our inflow to the, to the Hofer Water Treatment Plant, we're very concerned that that, that that lock be maintained, that dam be maintained so that the, so the water supply to City of Fayetteville is guaranteed. So we are, we are submitting a petition to the Corps of Engineers that they give those, all three locks and dams to PWC. And the plan is that we will give Lock and Dam One, which is the lower Lock and Dam, to the Lower Cape Fear River, um, Water Authority that has the same kind of service that we provide, so they, they can maintain that to maintain their intake to their water plant, and that we give the second Lock and Dam to, um, the Elizabeth Town area, which has desire for that Lock and Dam to be maintained for recreational purposes for their need, and that we maintain, uh, ownership and control for the commission of Lock and Dam Three, which controls our water supply. And so what we are asking from the city today is a letter of support to do that. Um, and we have worked with the mayor and the, and, um, the manager to include the concerns that the city has about future opportunities along the Cape Fear River in our petition, so that we, we've asked, we're telling the Corps of Engineers we're going to do the things that the mayor and the manager thinks is important to the city, as well as maintaining our water supply. So that is why we're asking for you to give us a letter of support for what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And so as I expressed upstairs, my concern is not so much, um, the request before us, but it's the timing within which we received the request, seeing as though the request came before us during the dinner meeting, and we haven't had an opportunity to, to review information. And, and I think even Mr. Brown's explanation just now, where he indicated that the, 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 um, agreement or the letter of resolution addresses the city's needs as, as represented by the mayor and the city manager. I think we were, we were all kind of upstairs saying, well, maybe not all of us, but some of us were upstairs articulating that we, we would like to make sure that we're receiving information so that we can articulate concerns and understand what's going on prior to having to make a decision. And, um, I, I want to be supportive of this particular item because, as I understand it, it makes sense. But because there's no, I, I've not had an opportunity, aside from what's been said, to review any information, I just cannot be supportive of something that I received at the eleventh hour without an opportunity to really be informed on what the implications of, of this could be on an ongoing basis. And, and it may be minimal, but it may not be. I don't know, because I have not been privy to anything other than the conversation that we had upstairs during the dinner meeting. So that's why I wanted to pull this, so that for the purposes of our viewing audience at home, they can understand why I am not able to affirmatively support this particular item this evening.
All right, thank you. Um, and just for clarification, um, the way that this discussion came up, PWC, as always, handles the, uh, utilities, which include water and our water supply. They have advocated, they've, uh, gone through litigation to make sure that our water supply levels in this community are adequate. And when I received a call from, uh, Governor's Office in Raleigh, it was after just alerting us that a request had been made in the event these dams are turned over to DEQ or the state, that PWC was making a request to take care of ours, which ensured, uh, our adequate drinking water levels. Um, and therefore, uh, prompted a question that I had with, uh, with the CEO, Mr. Trejo, and Mr. Nick Nolan, who came in and kind of explained what their position was. Now, this was in the middle of, uh, National League of Cities, which was, you know, most, a lot of the council members were out. And then when we came back, we had COVID-19, and we received an email today at one eighteen, uh, from Mr. Trejo, telling us that, um, they had a, uh, a deadline to get this letter of recommendation in to, um, in order to be considered, of Friday. And so that is why we have it tonight, as we've talked about. Um, you know, we have a lot on our plate at this time, but, uh, I trust PWC in, in looking after the, the drinking water supplies for the city. They've done a, a good job so far, and I think they'll continue to do that. Uh, Councilmember Ingram, I think I saw your light first?
Yes. Um, Mr. Trejo, is it?
Mr. Brown.
Brown, I'm so sorry, please forgive me. Mr. Brown, can you talk about, there's three, three dams there in question, correct? And we are applying for one dam, correct?
Um, the Army Corps of Engineers, who currently owns and operates and maintains the dams, have determined that they're going to give all three dams to one entity. They're not going to make the decision to split the dams up. So our, our petition, which we're asking for your support, is that we request that all three dams be given to us, to PWC. With the plan, and we've talked to Lower Cape Fear River Authority, we've talked to the people in Elizabeth Town, that the lower dam, Lock and Dam One, be given to the Cape Fear, Lower Cape Fear River Authority, so they can maintain their water supply. That the middle dam, Lock and Dam Two, be given to the Elizabeth Town area so they can maintain the recreational facilities that the dam offers them in that area. And that PWC retain, uh, ownership and control of Lock and Dam Three is the one that provides support to our water levels at the Hofer Plant intake. So the, the Corps of Engineers said, we're only going to give all of them to one person. We are petitioning that that person be us with a plan that we give the other ones to the people who can most benefit by owning and, but most likely to maintain them, so that those can, things continue to be, be done.
Okay, and, um, thank you for the explanation. My next question is, as all plans have more, a lot more details to what they tend to be, not saying that what this is, is great, I, I, I do support it. However, how fast can you get that plan to council so that we can fully, fully begin to...
We can send, in the morning, I will send you the details of what we have about the, what we're, what we're submitting.
Okay.
Uh, what it is, is it's, it's a request from the Corps of Engineers that they recommend to Congress that these be given to us. That's what we're asking them to do. And then Congress has the ultimate authority to do that, and then ultimately, we would have to accept them.
Okay.
But I can get you the documentation of what we're submitting tomorrow morning, so you can see it all.
Okay, and that plan entails what you just stated as far as the expressing?
Right, yeah, because basically, we, we have a package we're putting together that this letter would go into, that explains... explains what our, what our proposal is and why we're doing it, and we'll get that to council tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, Councilmember Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Brown, I just have one question or to clarify something. So you're saying for the other two, um, dams, that they have already agreed and understand that once, if we're allotted this, that they would take on those dams? They've already submitted their resident, their letter of.
Basically, they're, they're told us, and, and there's letter support from lower Cape Fear River Authority in this package. So we've talked to them about that, that they would be willing to take over the, the maintenance and operation of those locks and dams for their own purposes, and that we would take over the one that supports our water supply, yes. We've been working for quite a time with all the different parties, trying to make sure that we can get as much support as we can, and working with them to support what we're doing. We have a letter from the Lo, Cape Fear River, lower Cape Fear River Authority that they're supporting. We have a letter from lots of different organizations who are affected by this, supporting what we're doing. And we'll get that information to you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Welcome.
Mayor Colvin, I have one more question.
Okay, I've got Mayor Pro-Tim, is that a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got Mayor Pro-Tim and then I have you after that.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we were upstairs discussing this, I, I recall that the mayor said that he had spoken to, um, Mayor Selfos down in Wilmington, and that there was a possibility that if we had, we had our, PWC owned our dam and William, Wilmington had their dam. What, am I correct in saying that there was a possibility that we could have boats that came down from our river down to Wilmington and they would come back up? Is that, did I hear that in the conversation?
So, yes, I had, I had talked to, Mayor Selfos had mentioned that like some time ago, and when, um, I met with Mr. Tragos and they said that they had received a, a letter from the Wilmington City Council, I texted him to ask for some clarification about it, uh, and basically called back and said that, um, the likelihood of us being able to use it for commercial traffic, right now, the Corps of Engineers looks at it that we're not using it and they would make the decision on what we are or are not doing. This would be for future, uh, availability, that they felt that if the dams were in the possession of the lower Cape Fear Authority and PWC, that we would have more of a likelihood to be able to use it for recreational purposes, and that was kind of how that conversation.
And that's part of our, our, in filing with the, with the Cape, with the Corps of Engineers, that we would plan to do whatever necessary to support any of that navigation that was coming along.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, and, and, you know, I can, I can say, serving on the PWC board, I know firsthand that y'all are always considering our wa, water quality and what is the best that we can do to control our water quality. Thank you.
All right, um, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, uh, Ma, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brown, how, how, how long has this conversation been a conversation? Not between you and, and maybe the city designees, but just in general, how long has this been a, a conversation?
Um, I don't remember the exact date when we started, but we have been considering whether this is something that we should do for several months. Uh, we've done our due diligence, um, the question came up in the dinner meeting about the condition of the locks and dams. We've done our due diligence to see if it's in a condition such that we felt comfortable we could maintain it in a way that would still allow us to do what we have to do. We've been talking to the other people who have, who are, have a stake in this, we've been talking to lower Cape Fear Authority, Wilmington, um, lots of the, the Elizabeth Town area, we've been talking to, uh, state representatives, we've been talking to congressional representatives, trying to understand what their concerns are, um, so that we can put a package together that tries to address the concerns that everybody who has a stake in this have had their concerns factored into it, so our solution is the best solution for everybody. So we've been working on it for several months. Um, we did not get to the point where we decided that we were going to submit an application. We thought it might make sense, but we didn't know for sure until recently, and when we knew for sure, we started to ask for support from the local governments, uh, the county and the city, we asked about at the same time. I know, um, Commissioner Adams talked to me at the Chamber Awards banquet and what, saying that he wanted to support us, so he was aware of it, we hadn't officially asked the county, the county for that. So it's been a month or so that we have been in the mode of talking to different government levels, asking for their support, and part of that process was to talk to the mayor and the, and the manager to ask for their support.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, just a, a couple of comments and some questions. Um, in the past, have other municipalities tried to take water out of the Cape Fear or steal our water?
Um, um, several years ago, I want to say three or four years ago, um, municipal water utilities in the, um, Wake County area, uh, asked for permission from the State Department of Environmental Quality to take water out of the Cape Fear River and put it back into the Noose River. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, we take water out of the Cape Fear, we use it, we clean it, and we put it back into the Cape Fear. And people upstream from us and downstream of us do the same thing. If you take it out and you put it into the Noose River, it never gets here. So we actually went to court and said, we need to stop this because we need to protect our water supply.
Well, that was my next question. There's nothing more important than our water supply. I mean, think about that. Um, now, will this help us with the Corps of Engineers making contacts? Because we want to ask them about stormwater at some point, because our stormwater system is going to have to be upgraded, and it all goes into the Cape Fear River. So would, is this going to allow us some communication with the Corps of Engineers?
Uh, I think it opens up the communications with the Corps of Engineers. Um, I don't know that the people who would be talking to you about stormwater are the same people who are responsible for the locks and dams. I don't know that for sure, sir. Um, but we, this, we will have communication, we've been in communication with the Corps of Engineers, and we'd be happy to help facilitate conversation with the city and city staff with them.
This is going to be extremely important because the locks and dams are crucial to our water supply long-term, and I'm thrilled that PWC has worked with these other entities to get us ready. Because I want everybody to understand, the mayor talked about commercial shipping and so did, uh, Mayor Pro-Tim Jensen, but these locks obviously open and close, and then I think we're going to have to put some fish ladders in. But the key is, we're going to be able to control water in drought situations. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, we'll control water in all situations.
In every situation.
In every situation, so that we allow, we're allowed to control how much water goes through the dam. You know, most of these dams, uh, are allowed to, can release water, which would lower your levels during a storm or something like that, but also can hold water back if you need to keep the levels higher to come, make sure that during a drought or a situation that there's enough water, it's high enough, so your intake at Cape, at the Hofer Plant can receive water.
We always want to keep the water level above the intake.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Davis?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as the, uh, city liaison to PWC, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we approve the agenda item number six point zero one two, which is a letter of support for PWC to accept responsibility for the Cape Fear River Lock and Dam System Three, Two, and One.
All right, there's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second, a second by Councilmember?
No.
I couldn't hear, was that, who, who was at the second?
Second, CJ, DJ here.
Councilman Hare?
Yes, sir.
Feeling better?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, says, this is the Davis-Hare motion, there's a, a discussion on the motion, I see a question by Councilmember Ingram, or a discussion?
Mr. Brown, please forgive me so, for so many questions. It seems that other council members may know more about this than I do, about this plan. So can, can clarify a few things for me? The Corps of Engineers have determined that we're not using it for commercial, commercial status, correct?
Right, so the, the Corps of Engineers, uh, the last commercial navigation, as I understand it, on the Cape Fear River was nineteen ninety-five. The Corps of Engineers has authority under the U.S. Constitution on commercial navigations. So, so they have the authority to maintain these locks and dams when there's commercial navigation. They're saying that since there's no longer commercial navigation, it doesn't meet their mission, so they're going to release the dams to somebody.
Right, I get that, okay, thank you, thank you for that piece. So Mayor Colvin mentioned about recreational use. In this plan that you will be submitting, will it also speak to the dispersion of the lo, of the locks and dams and this recreational use?
So, yes, I, the plan contains the, after, if, if we receive the locks and dams, we're going to get all three of them, okay? So locks and dams, Lock and Dam One, the lower Lock and Dam, supports the water supply for the lower Cape Fear Water Authority. Lock and Dam ex, supports existing recreational facilities in the Elizabeth Town area, and Lock and Dam Three supports our water sup, supply for Hofer, but we, as the mayor said, we've also agreed to do things, other people like maintain fish ladders so that the fish are there, so everybody who has a stake in this, we have agreed to maintain these locks and dams, basically in the condition they're at now or improved, so that we can maintain what we need to do for our water supply. So we're reached out to all the stakeholders, saying, tell us what's important to you, so we can include that in our, so we can have everybody's support in doing this this way. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, my last comment will probably be to mayor or council. Mayor mentioned, uh, in one of our last meetings that, you know, as liaisons, we need to do a better job of bringing information back to council before we get a chance to vote on it. So I would just ask that liaisons, you know, including myself, do a better job at bringing stuff back to council, so we're not blindsided by issues like this. No fault to you for doing, but you, you, you've obviously, from what I can understand, probably been communicating, but just, you know, as liaisons, as council members, we need to do a better job at communicating, um, issues like this amongst each other. Thank you, Mr. Brown, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so we have a, a motion on the floor, uh, Davis, uh, Hare motion, um, we've had several rounds of discussion, so, all right, council, I'll look to you for some action. All right, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Uh, Councilmember Hare?
Green, sir.
Councilmember Wright?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries nine to one. I was voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate your help.
Thank you. Go get it done, sir. All right, so that was the consent agenda. All right, item seven point zero is the public hearing. Individual designed to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless a previous arrangement and a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the, the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please, uh, in this case, you are not coming to the podium, you will, uh, we have made provisions for you to be able to speak, uh, through us, through the monitors. So please, when you are, uh, allowed to speak, please clearly state your name and address, uh, then you may address the city council. And because these are special use items, uh, is that?
Uh, the first, whoops.
First is not. All right, so when you see the light change from green to amber, or in this case, you may not see the light, but you will be notified when it is amber, it'll tell you that you have thirty seconds remaining, uh, and when it turns red, it means your time has expired. So at this time, uh, Mr. Brown, long time no see. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, all right. So Mayor, um, given the unusual.
Mr., I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, y, yes, sir, Councilman Wright, you had a question before he, uh, made the staff presentation?
Uh, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, but this is not pertaining to this, uh, pertaining to last Monday, uh, public, uh, public forum, there was some emails sent in, but I'll, I'll, uh, question that after the.
Okay.
Presentation.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, given the unusual circumstances, I think as most of you know, that when we have these public hearings, oftentimes there are people in the audience who have questions about being answered, and we usually go after the public hearing, go into the Lafayette Room and answer those questions. But given that there are no speakers here tonight, and a lot of people may not have come because of the circumstances. So I'll give my, my contact information now, so if anybody wants to reach out to me with questions after the meeting tonight, they can certainly do that. Um, so my email address is mark, M-A-R-K dot brown, B-R-O-W-N, at F-A-Y-P-W-C dot com, and the easiest number to reach me on is nine one zero three nine one eight two zero nines, and I'll take any questions that way and be able to get, talk to the people and answer any questions they may have about this or anything related with the Phase Five projects.
All right.
Okay.
So with that, we will open the public hearing, and you have no speakers?
No speakers, sir.
All right, we will close the public hearing. All right, council, are there any, uh, questions for Mr. Brown?
Oh, wait, oh.
What was that? Okay, all right, uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brown, are you, are you, uh, requesting that we, um, provide or approve the resolution for this annexation? Is that what you're?
So, so tonight, um, what we're doing is holding the public hearing, and it's your next regular meeting, there will be a consent item to, to request your permission to proceed with the project, that, that you will agree that when the project is done, that the assessments that are appropriate at that time will be, will be done. So we're asking for your permission on April fourteenth to proceed. This is just a public hearing that's required by state law through these assessment processes.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Manager, you had something to add?
Mr. Mayor, we had actually, um.
Is that you, Madam Attorney, pushing his light?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trying to confuse me over here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see for the lysol. Uh, Mr. Mayor, these two items, as you know, were continued from last week, and they are on your agenda and ready for approval if the council is so inclined tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, uh, Councilman Dawkins, did you have something to add today?
I'm pre, prepared to make a motion.
All right, waiting on you, sir.
Uh, motion to approve, uh, PWC request for Phase Five Annexation Area Twenty-Four, Section A.
All right, so there's a motion, uh, by Councilmember Dawkins to approve item seven point zero one, uh, there's also a second, I think, by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Uh, had a lot of seconds for that, but let me clear the board. So, um, any discussion on the Dawkins-Banks-McLaughlin motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for, uh, action on this. All right, so, um, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Hare?
Green, sir.
And Councilmember Wright?
Green.
All right, and I need Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and Davis, can y'all vote for me again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right, items, uh, seven point zero two.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Okay. Uh, we cannot interject, um, concerning, um, emails on the, uh, public forum for last Monday because of the, uh, coronavirus, um, they were, they were allowed to email but not come in, but have not heard anything back concerning the, um, situation. We cannot interject.
Um, let me do this, Councilmember Wright, we're going to take a break after item seven point zero two, but before we do that break, we'll let you kind of provide us an update on that before we start our special use permit discussions.
Yes, sir.
So after this item, I'll call on you, um, before we take a recess.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, item seven point zero two, um, Mr. Brown, long time no see, yes, sir.
So, uh, this is the second area of Area Twenty-Four, uh, this is, um, Billy Chills and Mills, um, Kings Mill. So they're both in the same general area, so we split it up because the work is too much for one contractor to do at once, so we do it at the same time, but with different contractors. Um, so, um, do you want me to go through this presentation, or?
I think we're pretty.
I thought you've seen it before.
Well-versed on this, yes, sir.
I'll rely on your discretion. So again, my contact information, if somebody has a question on this area, is mark.brown@faypwc.com, or my phone number is nine one zero three nine one eight two zero nine. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to help them after the meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no speakers.
All right, so I will open and close the public hearing, uh, for this item. Uh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Um, I just want to say thank you, Mark, because I know for the last few weeks, you've
Um, I just wanna say thank you, Mark, because I know for the last few weeks, you've been, um, very kind as far as coming, each, each week coming up and speaking to the public. And thank you just for allowing us to, um, extend our time. But, um, Counsel, I just wanna make a motion that we move forward with Seven Point Zero Two, the Phase Five Annexation Area Twenty Four.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin. Uh, Councilmember Kinston, was that a?
Second.
Second. All right. Thought it was. All right. There's a second by Councilmember Kinston, uh, to approve Item Seven Point Zero Two. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Um, Councilmember Waddell.
Green.
Councilmember Hare.
Green, sir.
And Councilmember Wright.
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right, Counsel, just before our, uh, ten-minute recess-
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilman Wright, you had, uh, something you wanted to share with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me this opportunity, the time to express, uh, the voices and concerns of the community, uh, on Wayland Drive. Uh, there's been an issue, uh, in that community for a while now. Uh, at our last heavy rain, uh, that community flooded tremendously and have been flooding for, uh, some years now. Uh, but it had a lot of coverage on the last one. So we had a couple of community meetings. Uh, Christoph Bauer, one of our city ma- uh, assistant city managers, uh, came out to that meeting. And I, I, I want him to, if you will, sir, um, express some of the concerns of that community, where we are, the overlays. Uh, it should last for maybe a couple of minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, um, I don't think he's gonna be able to do that for a couple of reasons. One, he, he just found out his mom passed away, so, um-
Oh, wow. I already hear that. You already hear that. Wow. Wow.
And, and plus, I don't think that the attorney's looking at me, uh, sideways because-
I know she's gonna, I know she's gonna look at us kinda sideways.
It was an item that's not listed on the agenda, so we'll have to, we'll have to do it.
Right, but Mr. Mayor-
But, but maybe they can, uh, what I was gonna propose-
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Since they sent in their emails, their emails were sent in to Chris, um, Kristen, uh, out of, out of a request from the staff, and they wanted to know if their emails have been received or heard, and they wanted a response.
Definitely can find that out.
What can we do for these citizens? What can we do for these citizens?
Yes, sir. So, so let me, uh, let me put eyes on that email during this next break, Councilmember Wright, and we will make sure that we could. Do you, you haven't asked it to that?
Yes, um, Kristen, um, provided copies to, to the council. Uh, it was paper clipped together, and I think there's also copies-
With the color code? Is that it?
Yes, that's it. And it's also, I think, in Councilmember Wright's box.
It is.
But we'll be happy to, um, uh, forward those to him tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I think-
Okay. So we-
Go ahead, sir.
I just need, I, I just need, well, I want them to address those issues. And I, we have addressed them, but I need to put, uh, this on the agenda for, I guess, the next coming, uh, session where we could actually have those citizens to come out and speak. Is that something we can do, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, he's not. Okay. All right. We got, we got you, sir. And I think Councilmember Ingram, um, was also gonna speak with you about that. So we'll take us a ten-minute recess, and, uh, we'll see you shortly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, trying to figure out how to get this. I'm getting the feed from the other room at the moment, so. Aha. There we go. Let's see which one. There we go. So the first, uh, special use, uh, case we have before you tonight is P twenty oh five F. Uh, this is Strickland's Portion Pack. Uh, it's located at twenty sixteen Saponah Road. Uh, they have just under an acre out there. Uh, this is a business that's been out on Saponah Road for about sixty years. Uh, you'll see here in a moment, uh, where they're located. Uh, if you, just off the map to the left is the, uh, shopping center with Carly Sees out on Cedar Creek Road. Just to the north here on Saponah is Ken Law's. Uh, so it kind of gives you a little idea of where the property is located. Um, it's mainly surrounded by, uh, residential property, as you can see. Uh, the, they own, uh, the property beside of them, and then there's a, an upholstery business across the road as well that's zoned commercially. Uh, land use map, uh, doesn't reflect that, uh, but, you know, the, again, these are commercial already along with one across the street. Um, these are some photos of the property, uh, as it sits out there. And what you'll see in a minute on their site plan, what they're looking to do is, uh, this house right here is on their property, and they're looking to tear down that house and pull a cooling unit there. Um, the front of the cooling unit would actually, uh, face their building, not the road. Um, and so it would take the place of this house here. Uh, again, this is just kind of what surrounds the property. Um, again, across the street, another business, and then just some single-family housing, and, uh, Ken Law's up the road from them as well. Uh, here's their site plan of what they're looking to do. Uh, that one-story brick house is actually a duplex, uh, and they plan to tear down that, uh, that brick structure and, uh, replace it with a, a cooling unit, uh, to increase their business there. Uh, the zoning's commission and staff both have recommended approval. Uh, we did not have anyone in opposition at the zoning commission, uh, meeting, and we have not had any calls or concerns, uh, from those surrounding neighbors as well. Um, zoning commission and staff recommend approval. Uh, we feel that, uh, the proposed SUP implements policies aden- adopted in the Unified Development Ordinance, that redevelopment of a portion, portion of this property would allow, uh, would not detract from the overall neighborhood, that the, uh, proposed SUP ensures that new developments compatible with the current zoning, uh, and the growth pattern in that area. Again, this business has been on that property for sixty years. Um, the attached site plan, uh, is evidence provided by the developer, uh, and, uh, conditioned in as part of, of this. And we saw no other factors that would affect public health, safety, welfare. Uh, we do have one speaker signed up, one of the owners of this business. Uh, so when we're ready for the public hearing, he'll, he'll be ready to speak. Uh, that's all I have, uh, for you at this point.
All right. Madam Clerk, so I heard from Mr. Harmon. We have one speaker?
Yes, sir. Just one speaker in favor, and that's Mr. Marshall Spain.
So with that out.
The attorney was asking me, have the people in the other room been sworn in?
Yes, they have, by the deputy clerk.
All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll, we'll catch questions after the close-up. All right, sir. Can you see us? We, he didn't have any audio. Can you, can you hear us, sir? Okay. Uh, we have a little feedback there, but, uh, how you doing? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Marshall Spain, twenty six, St. Saponah Run, Portion Pack.
All right. Uh, hold on one second. We're, we're making an, uh, an adjustment. Mr. Harmon, you wanna bring him? Yeah. Uh, sir, we're gonna get you to come across the hall, 'cause there's a lot of feedback in your audio.
He's not going through that. That's the process that they've got over there. So she, she attested. I, I don't know how they did that, but she swore me in.
Hey, guys.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to make myself available in case you had any questions about what we were planning on doing.
All right. Well, don't get too far. It might happen. So, uh, uh, you wanna state your name and your address?
Yeah, Marshall Spain, twenty fourteen Saponah Road. And I'm with Strickland's Portion Pack.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Uh, Madam Attorney?
Mayor, given that this is a special use permit, it probably would be good for the applicant to go ahead and present, um, the information related to the proposed, um, application, so that you'll have that in the record.
Okay. Was it, uh, did, did you have a presentation that you wanted to make? I think Mr. Harmon presented. I think Mr. Harmon presented, but, uh, did, did you have something he wanted to add to?
Well, just, uh, if you're not familiar with our business and what we do, we're, we're a food service distribution business, and we supply restaurants, daycares, schools, private schools throughout the community and throughout southeastern North Carolina. And we're really not looking to do anything differently than we've done since nineteen sixty, we just, we've outgrown our, we've outgrown our facility, and we just need a little expansion.
Gotcha, that's a good problem to have. All right, so, uh, thank you, sir. So, Council, I will, uh, open the floor for any questions that you, that you have, but that's the last speaker, correct?
Yes, sir, we have no further speakers.
All right, so, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Spain, and, um, thank you so much for what you all do, uh, with your business, and being a longtime business in District Two. I did have a question, um, the duplex, you own that, that duplex, correct?
We do.
So it is you tearing down your own property and nobody else's, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, my second question, the properties east, south, and north, um, they will not be impacted by this, um, this growth, this expansion of your business?
N- no, a- a- any impact, I think, would be positive. The duplex is an old structure, and we do our best to maintain it, but it, it is a nineteen-sixties era, yeah, twelve-hundred square foot duplex, and we'll have a nicer-looking structure there when we're done doing what we do.
Okay, that is all the questions I have, and thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Dawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um.
Uh, well, I think I need to close this public hearing.
Oh.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Um, I wanted to see if Councilmember Ingram wanted to make the motion, yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to Councilmember Ingram to make the motion.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilmember Dawkins, and Mayor, I would like to make a motion to request, um, so, excuse me, to allow the warehouse distribution, um, located at two, twenty-sixteen Saponah Road, um, to, um, I would like to allow a per, I'm sorry, allow their special use permit, my fault.
Um, so a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes, sir.
All right, so item seven point zero three is listed.
Um, on the, I'm sorry.
The eight findings of fact, yeah.
I would like to use findings of fact.
Thirty minutes.
Um, okay, I would like to use findings of fact number three, the special use avoids significant adverse impact, uh, on surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. Do I need to redo that?
Mayor, so the approval of the special use permit would include the eight findings of fact that are set forth in the packet, if I understand, uh, Councilmember Ingram's motion?
That is correct, that, and the reasons follows, Councilmember Ingram, you, you just need to repeat these, the special use complies with all applicable. Yeah, that section.
We can, uh, tonight's meeting, we can incorporate those by reference, uh, to the packet.
Okay, so, so basically, Councilmember Ingram, as you, uh, as your motion to approve item seven point zero three, uh, will reference the eight findings of facts as enclosed in the packet.
So I don't have to use just one, all right, thank you, sir, I would like to approve the, I would like to approve the special use permit, um, based on the eight findings of fact.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve, uh, based on eight findings of facts as listed in the packet, there's a second by Councilmember Dawkins, um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all right, Counsel, I look to you for action. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, well, Councilmember Waddell.
Green.
Councilmember Hare.
Green, sir.
Councilmember Wright.
Green.
All right, yeah, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, by those voting. Motion carries, good luck, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Item seven point zero four, uh, special use permit, Mr. Harmon.
Actually, Miss Baptiste.
Miss Baptiste.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Baptiste, planner with Development Services. This is case P twenty dash zero six F. Um, this case was submitted by Scott Brown on behalf of Monomoy Properties. This special use permit has two parts to it. Um, the first part of the special use permit is to, um, issued a special use permit to an existing non-conforming site, and to allow the, um, the site to expand by oper- opening a sixty-by-sixty repair shop with a wash bay. The property is located, located at three eighteen and four forty-two Eastern Boulevard in District Two, being approximately five point zero three-one acres. To give you a little idea of where the property is located, um, Eastern Boulevard runs right here, and it, the property is just south of East Russell Street. Behind the, um, the subject properties is the Fayetteville Housing Authority's Campbell Terrace. According to the zoning, um, map for the area, the majority of Eastern Boulevard is zoned as, um, community commercial or heavy industrial. Um, there are some residential zoning districts further in along Cook Street. According to the land use map for the area, um, this area should remain, should be developed according to downtown standards. Now, this is the land use plan from twenty-ten, so it's a little dated, and this area has developed significantly, significantly as commercial and heavy industrial. The subject properties, um, have, this is Sunbelt Rentals at three eighteen Southeastern Boulevard. Sunbelt has been at this location since the nineteen-nineties, and at the time, it was developed according to the ordinance that was in existence. Since that time, um, with the approval of the current U D O, this, um, use has become an existing non-conforming use, as with the U D O requires a, um, special use permit be issued for heavy equipment sales and rental use in the community commercial zoning district. This property is four forty-two Southeastern Boulevard. The applicant is looking to expand onto this lot, which they own, um, to for, for, to construct the sixty-by-sixty repair shop and wash bay. To the north of the property is abandoned hotel. This hotel is in very, um, very dis, is various states of disrepair, and has been used at times as a homeless encampment. To the south of the property are various commercial developments, including Fastenal Signs and Klick's Termite Control. To the east across Eastern Boulevard is the Napa Auto Parts Store. As you can see from the site plan, um, this is the current development with, um, for Sunbelt Rentals. They're intending to locate the, um, wash bay and repair shop on this property. The intention of the owner is to extend the current fence line that runs along Eastern Boulevard, um, to encompass, um, approximately two acres of the site, and then extend it, um, going to the north, and then across, um, to, again, to the east along the current, um, tree line. The applicant is not intending to remove any of the trees in the rear, this will provide a natural buffer between the use and the, um, and the adjoining residential. Also, there will only be access to the wash bay and repair site from the existing site. There will not be another curb cut, um, leading, uh, leading to Eastern Boulevard. Um, this site will not be open to the, the expansion will not be open to the public, this will be for the, um, repair and service of their per, the property that they rent out, they rent out. Here you can see, um, based on the survey, a little more where they intend to, um, draw the property lines. They're only intending to take two acres out of the four forty-two site and combine it with the three eighteen site. Um, this will, this will have to be done through, um, the city and approved, um, for the recombination. According to the development standards with the U D O, um, this use shall be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from any residential district. The applicant is asking for a waiver to this, as, um, there is a residential development directly behind, um, the, behind the, the current site, as you can see here, with the, um, with Campbell Terrace. From property line to property line is approximately seventy-five feet from, um, Campbell Terrace to the u, um, to the property line for the development, that's why the applicant is intending to leave the natural t- tree line buffer seen here. Staff, um, feels that there's no problem with reduce, um, waiving the two hundred and fifty feet, um, separation, as, um, the, the residential development wasn't done until twenty-eleven, long after the, um, this use was in place. The additional condition, development conditions are, is that there is no heavy equipment display shall be located within the required setback or the perimeter buffer, the use shall not be more than, shall not have more than one heavy equipment display pad, and no heavy equipment shall be displayed on the top of the building. All lighting, all lights and lighting shall be designed, um, to reflect only onto their property and not disturb any existing residential uses. Staff and the zoning commission has recommended approval of this SUP. Um, the proposed SUP implements the policies adopted in the Unified Development Ordinance. The expansion of the use is allowed in the community commercial, um, district and will not detract from the overall area. The proposed SUP ensures that new development is compatible with the twenty-ten land use plan, and there are no other factors that substantially affect h- the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. That's all I have for you this evening, um, staff is available for comments, and, um, and the applicant is also in the other room, um, ready to answer any questions, um, should there be a need.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
May we just have one speaker in favor, Mr. Scott Brown?
All right, so, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Brown, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
All right, we can hear you fine. Uh, please state your name and your address for us.
Scott Brown, four oh nine Chicago Drive, uh, suite one twelve Fayetteville, North Carolina. Uh, not to rehash, uh, what, uh, Jennifer just said, but she said everything I need to say, so if y'all got any questions, I don't want to drag this thing out any longer what it needs to be, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but it's a simple request, there's an existing site, it's been there for years, we're trying to correct non-conformity, and at the same time, ask for the, the addition of a sixty-by-sixty building that will benefit the business for repair and washing the existing equipment that's there now. As you mentioned, we're not going to remove any of the existing tree buffer that's in the back, we're just going to expand on what used to be the old, uh, hotel site.
Okay, sir. Uh, Counsel, uh, Councilman Davis?
Uh, Mr. Brown, um, based on the design, I think it says, that's not a two hundred and fifty-foot buffer, in your assessment, will the trees do an adequate job of creating that visual buffer between your back lot line and the community behind you? Do you, in your assessment, is it, is it dense enough to provide an adequate buffer?
The existing building is much deeper than the, what we're proposing to be located much closer to Eastern Boulevard than where the eastern building's at now, and so, and it's not, it's going to be a very tall building at all, so the existing buffer that you have will be more than adequate, in my opinion, to, uh, between the, uh, use and the existing residential in the rear.
All right, thank you, sir. Now, earlier in the presentation to the, um, just, to the north, there was an abandoned hotel, I think it used to be the, uh, what was it? Horn, Horn's Motor Lodge. The, your client doesn't own that property, do they, sir?
No, sir. My, uh, my client is purchasing approximately two acres of that tract, recombining it in with the Sunbelt Rentals property.
That Horn site actually, um, came before City Council last year in February, um, that's where they were thinking about doing the climate control storage, and a special use permit was issued for that in February, um, by the board.
Okay, so I'll ask you an unrelated question after this, so, I guess right now the issue at hand is, uh, item seven point zero four for Sunbelt Rental. Um, Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Brown or Miss Baptiste? All right, I'll look to you, Councilmember Ingram.
All right, Mayor Colvin, I would like to, um, make a motion to move to approve the special use permit, um, to allow, um, an existing non-conforming use to conform to the current, uh, Unified Development Ordinance standards, and allow this business to expand onto a portion of an adjoining site as depicted on the attachment site plan, and as staff presented, based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, um, uh, that it is consistent with the application because the development is located in the community commercial district, and this, uh, this use complies with the findings listed below, the eight findings of fa- of fact listed, um, in our packet. This proposed permit, um, is in public interest because the, the proposed SUP does fit the character of the area.
All right, so, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve special use permit request with, uh, based on the eight findings of facts as mentioned, uh, there's a second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? You see a discussion, on the motion you just made? No, no, it's not part of this, yeah, yeah, it, it wasn't, it wasn't theirs, so, I was just making sure when I asked. All right, um, all right, let me clear it. Counsel, any other discussion on the motion? All right, is that a vote? Okay, all right, Counsel, I look to you for your vote, you're quick, you're quick tonight, I got you. All right, Councilmember Waddell. Councilmember Hare.
Green, sir.
Councilmember Wright.
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, emotion carries unanimous, all right, thank you, sir. All right, Counsel, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, oh, uh, who's that, City Attorney, Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Counsel, um, before we adjourn, I did want, um, the Counsel to wish Councilmember Ingram a happy birthday.
Ah, happy birthday. You know Mr. Manager is very sensitive about birthdays, he better not mention his birthday.
Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country